Good evening. All right, let's call this regular Board of Finance meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, August 16th, 2022. It is now 5:09 PM. And participating this evening here in the City Hall, I have Mr. Bayes and Mr. Wright. And participating via Zoom, I have Mr. Boynton and Mr. Anderson. Before we begin the meeting, could we please stand and pledge the flag? All right. Jumping into item number one on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There is no public in the room, so we'll move right on to item two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from June 21st, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
Second by Mr. Boynton. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And for the record, an abstention from Mr. Bayes. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to open discussion with the potential sub-motion for adoption of the expense reimbursement policy for police department extra duty assignments. This is pending, it says pending City Council approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Was that Mr. Bayes?
Yeah, that was me then.
Right. Motion made by Mr. Bayes, second by Mr. Wright. All right. I'll do a quick, I'm hoping everybody had a chance to read the policy. Just the Cliff Notes version for many years, extra duty revenues. These are reimbursement revenues from contractors that bring on the police department to direct traffic through construction sites and primarily on our roads, but sometimes for special events that may be happening in the fields, parks, you know, or off, any off-site location. These revenues and expenses were always tracked through the regular operating budget annually. And there was always a question as to the final disposition of any surplus or how we've covered any shortfall in that budgeting process. Traditionally, it was a surplus, and in some years, it was a very large surplus. So last year, we determined that we were going to start budgeting for these expenses and tracking the revenue in a separate fund so that we can have a better idea of what those expenses are, what the revenues are, what the surpluses are, and do a better job of reconciling what's been billed and what's been received. And our first year ended June 30th of 2022, and we came to the realization that there's a way for us, once we're better tracking this, to plan better as to how to return those dollars or put those dollars back to work for the taxpayers. Hence the policy, you know, we're looking at those expenses that we can directly correlate to an administrative fee, administrative function, whether it's the traffic officer doing the scheduling, his assistant doing the billing, our financial offices doing the receipts and deposits and reconciliations of the accounts. So those, we know, are direct reimbursements for those annual expenses. The expenses that are charged for the use of the vehicles or any equipment is a little bit different because in the operating budget, we have a planned sum that we sink into the vehicle replacement account. So when we were looking at these expenses that are coming back in for vehicle use, we were looking at them through the lens of how do we put these dollars to workforce in both the vehicle replacement account, which traditionally has experienced some fluctuation in funding depending on how bad of a budget year we have. But also recognizing that that revenue can be pretty extraordinary and that there may be another opportunity to put those dollars to use for the taxpayers in a shorter term. And that's when Robin and I were sort of talking it through, and we brought the chief in to have the discussion that if we were to look at that vehicle charge that gets charged to the contractor and the reimbursement received and said, take 50% of that, turn that back into the vehicle replacement account, and the other 50% sink into the traffic, a traffic capital reserve account to cover some infrastructure improvements or improvements to some of the traffic measures like signal lights and traffic boxes and signs. So that's what we boiled this down to. Chief Baldwin and I went over it a number of times. He was satisfied with this, felt it was more than fair, appreciated the effort to try to find a way to fund some of those other traffic expenses in a way that doesn't, you know, put it out there in an operating budget where it's traditionally cut. So that's what we have, and the floor is open for questions.
No questions. I just, I think it makes sense, especially, you know, taking those direct costs from us charging for using those vehicles and putting it into vehicle replacement. You know, it makes sense, and, you know, I like, always we like hearing, talking about capital and investing in capital, so makes sense.
And what we find year over year, and this board has, these members have been together long enough, when we look at our operating budget year over year and we need to look for cuts, almost historically, it is those capital expenditures that get cut. So this is a way to sort of protect that capital investment. Robin and I spoke a little bit more about our rationale with the vehicle replacement. So how this works right now with vehicle replacement, we purchase patrol cars out of the vehicle replacement account, and they're in active service for a number of years. And when we're ready to retire those vehicles, because they've reached their usable life, we downgrade them to these road construction projects. And they stay in that function for a number of years, you know. And my thought when we were talking about it is, if we had retired those vehicles and sent them out to auction, those funds would, the auction funds would have come into the vehicle replacement account, you know. But when you put them back into service in a construction project and you've got them in service for a few more years, the value further reduces. So when it does ultimately go to auction, there's a reduced amount coming in. So this way, I think we capture that reimbursement at a reasonable period of time and the taxpayer's benefit.
This does apply to like all functions, not just the road constructions, but prays, coal park?
Yes.
And anytime the police are doing it, should do it.
That is correct. Yeah. So if there are no...
One, one comment from me, Mayor. I remember looking at a report a couple of years ago on our traffic light replacement and how, how far behind we were and what that was going to really cost. And I know that's been cut a couple of times in a row to the point where some of our traffic lights, you can't get replacement parts for anymore. So having this program in place to really start building up the capital reserve, they're, they're going to come to a critical mass on some of those cases where we're going to be dipping into funds we don't have. So I think this is a really good program to help try to fund those little, little-known areas throughout the municipality that become big expenses when we have to instead of when we, when we can accumulate the cost.
I appreciate that. Yes, I think last year we got the mind-numbing number of 24 million to replace every traffic signal and crosswalk light. So $200,000 isn't going to get us very far. But what we also know is we're going to have to chase some grants. But last year, you will recall, when there was a car or truck that plowed through a traffic box, the police department had to come and ask the Board of Finance if we could go into contingency to cover that expense. We think creating this capital reserve provides that, that pool that they can, they can start working off. So if there are no questions, I guess I'd be looking for...
Mr. Anderson has his hand up.
Does he? I'm, oh, I see, I'm sorry. I've got his chat, and now I see his hand. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, so a significant surplus, whether or not we can consider applying that considerable surplus to a pension or OPEB liabilities? I think for the reasons that I explained about investing in that traffic, that, against that $24 million of traffic upgrades that need to happen, looking at those vehicles, you know, and when we're not funding that vehicle replacement account correctly, we find ourselves putting off the acquisition of replacement vehicles, police patrol cars or snowplows. So for those reasons, we did focus on just that purpose. But I'm certainly open to a further discussion about how we can be a little more aggressive in funding our OPEB and pension liabilities as we go into the next budget cycle and talk very seriously about what's our fund balance and how are we using it and how are we budgeting? I would, I would appreciate that, being a part of that conversation. Other questions? All right, so I'm looking for a sub-motion that would move to adopt the policy as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes.
Second.
And second by Mr. Wright. Any questions on the sub-motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion carries. Thank you very much. Item four on the agenda, this is where we get into Robin's favorite part of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to authorize the budget transfers and amendment requests for fiscal year 2122 as described in City Comptroller's letter dated August 15, 2022. This has already been approved by the City Council at their meeting on August 15th.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Bayes, second by Mr. Wright. Right, questions on the transfers?
Robin, there's a lot of, is this pretty much the last of 2122 transfers, you think?
Yes.
Yeah, so this should wrap it up.
Yeah, these were the requests that came in from department heads along with just regular annual budget appropriations that needed to be then need to be transferred out of the general fund. And the reason we have two, that I'm doing 21 and 22 and 22 and 23 is because generally, we would like to do them at the beginning of the year. So a lot of the transfers that we're making for 2122 are duplicated or just off by a different value, but the same for 2223.
Okay.
Other questions on these transfers?
Yeah, so do you have any specific questions?
Yeah, I see a lot in capital projects and reserve.
We did review balances to see if we felt that the balances did or didn't need additional funding. And we felt that these were definitely needed. Obviously, the vehicle replacement is a large part of the first page, and those are the regular transfers. Couple transfers that are, you say sinking into a fund for future purchase that we've measured out over a number of years so that we get to where we need to be when we need to make that purchase. There are some, you know, HVAC costs where in the next couple of years, we're going to have to replace some boilers, so we're transferring some funds out that have a remaining balance and that will help to get us to where we need to be in a couple of years to, to be able to make those purchases.
Okay.
I did...
I'm sorry. So the, I already see three line items here for that outside duty per the council approval. So immediately following this approval, those 2122 funds are going to move into that outside duty revenue account. Vehicle replacement gets 203, and then the traffic division account gets 14960?
Go up, go up online.
Oh, it's on top. Okay, sorry. So 200.
Sorry.
Yep. So, okay, so Traffic Division gets 203, 214. Same thing with the, with the vehicle replacement?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the admin is right above it, the 232.
But that, yeah, that goes for...
Back into the general.
Right, for paying the actual officer overtime. Okay. That's it for me.
Yeah.
Yep.
If I may, just as Robin said, a lot of these in our budget process were identified as capital reserve. And this is traditionally, I mean, ideally, these should all happen immediately after the budget is adapted so that that's all in that capital reserve. First, for past practice has been weighted to the end of the year, which is why we're looking at the year-end and finally making these moves.
And I'm glad to see we're going retro with those, with the council policy, right? Because if we're, if we're moving those for 2122, we're going retro for the, you know, with that new policy.
Right, because, yes.
Yep. Good.
And I did review our budget performance report to see where we were finishing at the end of the year to see if we would be utilizing any of our fund balance. And we were discussing it today. We're going through the close right now. We're unencumbering POs, and because I haven't experienced the full close here in Torrington,
Right.
I'm not completely confident to say that I, I feel that the amount, we'll use very little of that fund balance.
Okay.
So when we were looking at these transfers, we felt that they were okay because we weren't dipping into the fund balance to make these transfers.
Right. What did we have to utilize in 2021? Was it, it wasn't that much?
It was 3.1.
3.1?
Yeah.
But you don't know yet what we're going to have to utilize this year.
I don't think it's going to be very much at all.
What's very much at all?
It's going to be nowhere near 3 million.
Yes, well, so on this one, if you think it's going to be 1.5, 2 million, or you think even less? Which is great, which is great news.
I feel, I don't want to just get everybody told.
Yeah, you don't want to, yeah, you don't want to say. Right, exactly.
So, but I feel...
Because if you end up needing 500,000 for some reason, then you don't want to say zero. But, but that's, it's at least good, you know, news compared to the 2021, 3.1 million. Because I remember that was a big number. So it's good to, it's good to hear. I won't get my hopes up that it's zero, but not yet. But yeah.
But you know, our revenues came in high. We had some, we had some savings in a number of departments.
Okay, very good.
All right, other questions on the budget transfers for the 2122 fiscal year? Seeing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the budget transfers and amendments requested for fiscal year 2223 as described in City Comptroller's letter dated August 15, 2022. Again, this has already been approved by City Council.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
And second by Mr. Bayes. Questions on these transfers?
Boy, a lot of these look familiar.
Yes.
I think, and I don't, I don't mean to go in front of Mr. Wright or Mr. Boynton, if you guys have anything. Or if, no. Um, yeah, pretty good. I like the, you know, the new account setup for building maintenance. I think that's pretty important, something that we talked strategy on. You know, putting specific dollars in those building maintenance accounts so that way, when those things come up, the money's there, we're not, you know, we're not doing budget transfers or looking to go into contingency for a $20,000 repair somewhere or something like that. So I'm really happy to see those building, those new building maintenance accounts, you know, and so broken down to, you know, elderly services, fire, police, animal control. I think it's a really, it's a really good way to account for it. It's also pretty transparent to us and the public, you know, where exactly those dollars are going, so I can appreciate that.
Any other questions? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the budget amendments for fiscal year 2223 as further described in City Comptroller's letter dated August 15. Again, already approved by the council at their meeting on the 15th. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
Mr. Bayes.
Let me see if Lance was going to do it.
I know. Yeah. All right, so this, as you know, represents, when we adopted the budget, the city was asked to go back and find another $262,157 in budget adjustments to get us to the approved budget, and these are the line items that had to be adjusted. If there are no questions, I will call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item seven is a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes.
Sorry.
Second by Mr. Wright. While in favor?
Aye.
All right, Robin, anything else?
No.
Okay.
Just that we're working through the flows to get prepared for the audit that will begin the second week of October.
Do you want to introduce your deputy?
Oh, did you know?
Yeah.
We've, yeah, I think we, yeah.
In June, I wasn't, I wasn't here. Yeah, I wasn't here in June.
Okay.
Nice to meet you. Hi, Kim, nice to meet you. Hopefully, you're enjoying your time in Torrington so far.
Yeah, it's been, she's been tasked with a lot, and she's, she's figuring it all out. So she's doing a great job.
Perfect.
Thank you. It's been, it's been good. It's, it's nice and diverse, I'll say that much.
Yeah.
But I'm enjoying the challenge, so, so far, so good.
I would only, I would add that, you know, when I think about anybody that comes into the finance department here in the city, the software alone is enough to make the job complicated. You know, municipal financing is a whole other animal, and I'm grateful Kim has done a great job. We had a meeting with the Board of Education a month ago, six weeks ago, and I greatly appreciated that everybody in attendance, including Kim, contributed to the conversation to help everybody that's in the room understand how complicated it is for us to share this software, share the responsibility of funding. And Kim jumped right in and...
Thank you, but yeah, I feel a lot better than I did when we first started, of course, but I have a ways to go, but at least I feel a lot more comfortable.
Robin gives you a hard time, you let us know.
Do we want to mention that?
Yes.
Yeah, so the, the Board of Ed has, they've stopped their conversation about switching out of New World. I think in that conversation, they realized, not them, but the company, I think, finally had the information that they needed to say that they really couldn't do what we were asking them to do.
So they can't integrate with the new software that they...
They can't talk to each other the way that we need them to. So they have tabled that conversation until they maybe create something that would allow the two programs to work together.
So they're still using the current program that the city does? Okay.
Was there money budgeted for the new?
I believe that they were expending, or they were utilizing Alliance District money to cover that expense. And yes, they did pay some expense, and to Robin's point, I mean, if there's a way for there to be a patch or a way for the two to interface, you know, we're certainly willing to work with them on that. But it, my point earlier, when I was grateful that everybody that was in attendance, Cheryl, our Deputy Treasurer, and what is her clerk, chief clerk, yeah? How to explain, you know, what on our side, the receiving side of this information, how critical it is for us to have that, that, thank you, real-time access to their information. So it was such a good conversation, and I did, I did find Mr. Arum, the superintendent, and even the software company admitted that it just wasn't right. So we may find that it gets reintroduced in the future, but for now, we're relieved on our end to know that there's a, there's a plan for us to make sure that we're working well together. The system is consistent and the information is real-time. And I think the only thing, other thing that I was going to add with, as far as department heads, when I talk about a department that saw a lot of, of turnover in the last year and a half, there are some great opportunities, and I'm really pleased Robin has asked to attend the GASB, is it GASP? GFG?
The New England Government Finance Officers Association Annual Call Conference.
Right, so there's a conference, there's an educational opportunity, you know. Likewise, we want to provide those opportunities to Kim because obviously succession planning is always key, but knowing how everybody's job works in a department is the, is the real important thing, you know. So we're looking for some investment in education for our departments. Professional development, I guess you'd call it.
Are you, are you proposing a transfer for that?
No, we didn't. We had funds budgeted, right?
Okay.
For the conference?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's local, it's in New Hampshire, so.
Oh, okay.
So as they invest all their time in us, we want to make sure we're investing in their professional development too, so.
Yeah, you wouldn't want to fly right now anyway. It's crazy.
You may not make it to the conference.
Yeah, no delays and cancellations.
Yeah.
All right, City Clerk, anything this evening? All right, and we're going to move into item eight, which is business by mayor and members. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. On a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Boynton. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, starting from my left, Mr. Wright, anything this evening that you...
Just the water company has sold, and does that have any implication for city taxpayers? Cities as a taxpayer, recreational use of water company land, anything at all?
So I have not yet had an opportunity to speak with the department, EverSource, that acquired the, the company. I think they're still in their transition. I am interested in following what's going on in the state with PIRA to see what will be coming down the pipeline for our residents. To your point, what we, what impacts may happen in our budget? Because as we know, I mean, there's a significant bill that we pay to the water company for our fire hydrant rentals. And as far as the use of any of the land, I'm not sure. But I appreciate you reminding me. I should reach out to them and see if I can get an appointment on the books.
The sale is, the transfer of sale is not complete or...
I think there's a transition period where usually with a transaction that large, there's usually a period of time where employees are transitioning and training. So, and customarily, we have a liaison with EverSource that keeps me up to speed on the traditional gas and electric. And I'm not sure if he'll also be our liaison for the water, so I will, I will follow up. It's a great, it's a great question.
Another subsidiary, but I think they work, do they work separate, pretty much separately? Or do they?
I don't know.
Yeah.
But I will, I'll find out.
Yeah.
Right, any other from Mr. Bayes? Anything else?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Boynton, anything this evening? Mr. Boyen, anything this evening?
A little bit. So my, my wife and I have made the difficult decision. We're, we're actually moving out of town. So we're, we sold our house. I work, if you guys don't know, I work in New York primarily right now. So I've been kind of commuting back and forth between Connecticut and New York for a couple of years. So. Little, little sad to, sad to go. But I do want to, I do want to thank my, my fellow board members. And especially the mayor. Yeah, it's been a real service, a real pleasure serving the. You know, the, the taxpayers of Torrington. And, you know, I'm hopeful that over my last several years here, we've made a positive impact on several different fronts. It's kind of funny, I'm getting a text right now asking if I'm still on the Board of Finance. So it's kind of.
Texting him. Which one of you was texting?
No, no.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's a little bit of. A little bit of a, you know. Sorry to go. Good opportunity for my wife and I. It's a situation where it makes sense for us. By unfortunately, basically effectively, you know, effective this evening. I'll be, you know, resigning from the Board of Finance. So I'll, I'll follow up Mayor with, with a letter. But again, I just want to thank you, thank the board here for all the. You know, all the guidance, all the, you know, all the wisdom over the last, geez, I'm not even sure exactly how many years, but pretty close to a decade.
Yes. I was going to make a comment like. You want to thank us for all the gray hairs we gave you, but.
Yeah. I wish I had gray hair.
Mr. Boyen called earlier today to let me know that this was. This was in the cards. And so we had an opportunity to talk and I, I can't even begin to express my gratitude for. What Mr. Boyen brought to the table for us, you know, his. His attention to detail, his, his quick wit, his ability to. Communicate very clearly, you know, what his expectations are or what his understanding is. Particularly through some of those very tense public hearings. And I'm going to miss him tremendously and. I'm. Happy for you, Lance, in this next leg of your journey. We'll be calling you back when we have another one of those big contentious meetings. I may just call you to call in and. With a bag of popcorn, watch it.
I think next time I'm going to park around the corner so people aren't waiting at my car.
I know, really.
You're going to leave me high and dry out there, Lance. You're going to leave me high and dry out there.
Yeah, hopefully no more three in the morning conversations.
I still can't believe that happened, but yeah. I'm sorry, we can never buy that time back for you.
Okay. Like I said, it's. It's been a real pleasure. I think there's a lot of things over the last several years that we've made a positive impact. You know, there's, like you said, some of those contentious meetings, but. You know, I always tried to bring a little bit of logic, a little bit of data. To try to make a data-driven decision because often these things can get very emotional. When you're dealing with very difficult concepts.
Agreed. So, thank you. We're. Not looking forward to the resignation letter, but I have a little bit of work ahead of myself. I, I can bring in. Probably a recommendation to the council for. Candidate to fill the vacancy. Certainly very big shoes to fill. Thank you. And Mr. Anderson, I know I should have waited and let Mr. around. Wait and go last. Is there?
Nothing to add this.
Nothing else to add this evening. Thank you. All right. Well, there being no further business before the board, I think I'll just entertain a motion to adjourn.
Lance, why don't you do, do the honor?
That's yours.
Well, I don't really know what to say here, but I just, again, thank you, everybody and. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And we're all in favor?
We are.
Have a good night and good luck with the move. I know the heavy lift is still ahead of you. So good luck with the closing and the move.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Lance.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Good night.